According to Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 5th, 2015, said Noah's Loves. Posted at the address on the Board of Ed, mailed to the Nutley Sun, Star Ledger, Notre Jersey Herald News, and Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun on January 15th, 2015, and the Herald News, January 24th, 2015, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please stand up and flex them.
(Applause). Glad you're here. It's Tuesday, 5th of January, United States of America, and a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cardisella.
Mrs. Dancheckmark.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Mr. Kudimsky.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Spalera.
Here.
Mr. Spazada.
Here.
Okay, can I get approval of the minutes? I'm moving over to your approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Um.
Close? Okay. Okay, this time we are going to start with presentations. We're gonna start with the Spring Sports Awards, which will be meeting in the auditorium because of the size. So we are gonna go over to the auditorium. You guys can just wait for us here, and then we will return back and finish the rest of our meeting. Okay? Just hang out. Yeah, if you come to the auditorium, polite, man. Just see you a little bit. Sorry. Cheers.
(Music)
Come here, come here.
(Music)
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 ... Coach Frank Piana. Coach Michelle Piana. Coach James Kelvin. Head Coach Wayne Tullow. Mr. Mizinski, Mr. Plath, it's my pleasure, my honor to present to you the lower two group three exceptional championship trophy. Again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out. What a great life to last on a great year. The Raider Nation defined itself this year and they're starting to break things. And you're all far that. And it was a great ride, and the lives just get together better and better. So again, thank you so much.
This evening, and again, our preschool and kindergarten celebrations were today to end the year. Grade six commencement tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Our middle school commencement out on the Gold Hole at 9:00 AM in the morning, and our high school commencement this Thursday at 9:06.
You done?
That's it.
Good job. Okay, Board Secretary Report. Okay, we're gonna skip Karen, and we're gonna call up Commissioner Scarpelli. I'd like to call him.
Thank you, President Scuzzata. It's my pleasure tonight, on behalf of the Scarpellis Association, to present the board with a $10,000 check to support our artistic and special ed programs and the teachers in the area.
I suppose the cat's going down. Somebody take it.
Before you leave, Commissioner Scarpelli, I think it's apropos right now to thank you for the help you've given us in the school district certainly financially, but I know your crew has been working on the corner of the high school, putting the new cement walk-in, the papers were in disrepair. We all appreciate the help that you've given us.
This is an example of us all working together for the common good. Something I promised that we do last year, the winter kind of ran into us, but we got to it, and I want to get it done before graduation. So it looks beautiful. Each day we've got a little bit more we would do. We were just gonna do the corner and the handicap ramps, and we decided that we're gonna add a bench, and now we had...
How's that?
On behalf of the board, you guys put in a tree and some landscaping, and it really, really looks nice now. So it'll be good for Thursday, and this is the way we should work together.
A hundred percent of the board applauds you for all the work you do for us.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good night.
Okay, now we'll go back to our Board Secretary Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I started my report out with a note of thanks to Commissioner Scarpelli, and in particular, I'd also like to thank his crew, Mr. Ferraro who felt was out there, and watering away today all of our new shrubbery, Mr. Luzzi and their team, as well as the Nutley Board of Education Brown's crew. It really does look beautiful, and thank you so much, Commissioner, for all your assistance. The state recently enacted a new law called PL 2015 Chapter 47. That law requires that we do a report of all awarded contracts to the board on an annual basis by June 30th. In order to get all of our contracts together, and in light of this new law, we had a lot of contracts on the agenda for this evening, which made our agenda quite lengthy, but rather than doing them periodically throughout the month of May and earlier in June, we tried to make them as a collective body of resolutions to make our reporting requirements a lot easier. So some of these contract renewals include educational services and programs, software, items such as Performance Matters, Real Time, AESOP, our website provider, and food service, just to highlight a few. There are also several annual resolutions covering Board of Education operational matters, added district summer tuition-based programs, service providers, and the purchase of a replacement bus. On June 16th, we had a bid opening for construction work. Tonight, the board is going to be awarding a contract to install a handicap ramp at Lincoln School. Unfortunately, the bid for the high school security entrance far exceeded the cost estimate and the budget, and on that basis, that bid is being rejected this evening. We did not receive any bids for the Spring Garden security entrance, but we will be rebidding the handicap ramp installation so that it's done in time for September. We're currently working with the architects to determine the best timeframe to rebid the high school and the Spring Garden projects. In light of these bid results, we immediately shifted gears to take care of a project that has been on a comprehensive maintenance plan. So we will be awarding this evening a contract to replace the tile flooring throughout Radcliffe School on both the first and second floors. This project is being funded with the maintenance reserve account. We know this is short notice to all of the staff at Radcliffe, but we will be supplying you with dollies and boxes so that you can pack up your classrooms. In addition, the two trees in the front of the middle school have finally been removed. Unfortunately, the bottom of both of these trees rotted out over time, and the inside of the base of the trees had basically turned black. They were presenting hazardous conditions, especially during rainstorms. And just a few months ago, we had a major limb fall directly into Franklin Avenue after a heavy rain and wind storm. With so much traffic along Franklin Avenue, the district needed to be proactive in attending to the situation, and everything was taken care of, and cleaned away, and the remainder of the cleaning will begin tomorrow morning.
You do plan on lighting some trees and replacing what we took down? Some little ones?
Some little ones? Yes, we will be doing some planting in front of the middle school.
Okay, for presentation time, we're gonna start with the summer reading.
Thank you so much. My name is Brooke Benavides, and I'm the K-12 Language Arts Coordinator for Nutley Public Schools. I'm pleased to be here this evening to talk to you about a brand-new devised summer reading program called Choice Matters. This is a K-12 program that we're looking at, and this will allow our students to have an element of choice in their summer reading text. So all of our incoming students, including the high school, will have the ability to choose the texts that they are reading this summer. We really believe that by providing students with an element of choice, they're going to be more motivated and engaged to read throughout the summer. Our goal here, as educators, is really to ensure that we are developing lifelong readers. And if students don't have the opportunity to choose texts that they are interested in, then sometimes we have students that are graduating that are disconnected from reading and have lost sight maybe of who they are as readers. So we really do believe that this program will infuse that belief into our philosophical approach here in Nutley, and that also matches our practice in the classroom because we know, especially at the K-6 level or K-8 level, the element of choice is available to our students, but we sometimes lose sight of that a little bit more at the high school level, and now everyone has this element of choice. So if we're looking at what we are doing here in kindergarten, our students are coming in as non-readers, so the program will look a little bit different at the K level. At the K level, we're going to ask parents to read to their children as frequently as possible. And not only reading books that you love, that you want to share with your children because they're your favorite stories from when you were possibly younger, but also books that give you an opportunity to engage in a conversation with your children about life lessons, about making good choices, about being honest, about building friendships. Especially our kindergarten students, when they come in, if they don't have experience within these areas such as, you know, it's okay to be nervous, or it's okay to be anxious when you're making friends, or we really need to be polite when we're at school. These are things that parents over the summer were encouraging you to engage in conversations with your children. So we're presenting with you a suggested list of texts. This is not an all-inclusive list. This is a list that a group of teachers selected that said, here's a starting point for you if you're looking to read some of those books. The only thing we are asking is that the parents will ask your child to select five texts that were their favorite throughout the whole summer, and give them either a little smile or a frown depending on what they felt in that text. And also, we're providing parents with some guiding questions. That way, you can start to generate conversations with your children so that you know a little bit more about how to approach the conversation if that's something that's not comfortable for you. For our first through eighth graders, our students right now, our current K through seven students, they are currently right now experiencing what we're calling Reader's Workshop in the classroom. In Reader's Workshop, we have this element of choice. We believe if our practice, September through June, is in that philosophical approach, we want to ensure that in the summer that approach is still utilized. So for our students that are currently in grades K through sixth, they're being assessed at a just-right reading level right now. Most of them have been formally assessed by their teachers. That level will be communicated to the parents in the form of a letter from the district so that the parents are aware of the child's level. The goal here is not that the student is only reading a just-right text, because we want to make sure that if a child is motivated and really wants to read a higher text, we don't want to say no, because then what we're doing is we're squashing a child's motivation to read. I can speak for my son, he's currently an M reader, but he thinks he wants to read a T text, and he should be able to do that. We're calling that text a reach text. A reach text needs your support. That's a text that a child should not be in independently, that you can either talk to your child, read with your child, take turns reading, to ensure that your child is walking away with some foundational understanding of what that book really is about so that they're ready to accept it. So please embrace that. Don't see the level as this is the only thing you are allowed to read. The level is just right, but the fact that your child wants to read, whether it be below level or above level, is something we do believe here and we encourage. As far as what the expectation is, there aren't a number of texts. Students can choose as many texts as they want. The thing is, we want them reading all summer, so that's going to look different for different students. And what they will do is they will write down the title and the author of the text they're reading on a summer bucket list. This information will be provided for you on our district website in a very informative packet so that you can learn more detailed information about it. And then when the students come back, we will use this summer reading experience to launch into our Reader's Workshop conversations. Students will be doing book talks, it will be part of the learning community and the environment at that level. For our high school students, there is a minimum requirement of one fiction and one nonfiction text that the students, again, will choose. If the student has a certain interest in an area, student wants to become a leader, he or she may want to read a text about, you know, leadership qualities or something that's nonfiction based in that area, or if they have a passion connected to some series book at the fiction level, they have the opportunity to choose that, because again, we want students to read. In addition to the requirement we're asking students to read throughout the summer, whether it be magazines, newspapers, blogs, additional texts, whatever the student might want, our goal here with our summer reading program, K-12, is that we're trying to minimize summer reading loss, and we're also trying to create a culture of we are readers here in Nutley, and reading is something we experience on a personal level that we talk and communicate with, not only over the summer, but with our teachers and with our educators throughout the year. In addition to the two texts, the students will have to have, they will have an assessment when they come back, but it's an in-class assessment. It is not an assessment that they will have to prepare for. On the website, we're providing some guiding questions suggesting they might want to use post-its, track their thinking, possibly in a journal. That is not a requirement that is suggested so that students can be reflected in their reading experience. To provide you with some more information, because I'm sure there are questions, there is a fairly extensive summer reading packet that will be available soon on our district website. In that packet, if you look here under the table of contents, there will be hyperlinks embedded so that if you are interested in one section, you can click right on that link, and it will take you to the page you need. There will be specific grade level information. Also, information on selecting just-right books. If a parent is new to the community and the child has not been leveled, that is okay. There is information on the website about how you select a just-right text, because again, this is just about getting students comfortable, and there are descriptors there that will ask you to present your student, your child, with some questions, and he or she can then gauge the reading level. We have an A to Z leveled list. Again, this is suggested, it's a starting point for you. And there are guiding questions connected to the level of the text. When you're using guiding questions with your children, you should ask them questions on their independent level, even if the text is above their level, because that is cognitively what they can tackle or what they can handle, and that's appropriate for the students. We have various forms of bucket lists. There is not one formal bucket list that should be submitted, K through eight. Students can create their own bucket lists if they want to go on a website or generate something digitally online, they can do that. There are also suggested websites to help you with text selection, incentive programs, there are fabulous programs out there that offer free books if you read, or Barnes &amp; Noble right now is offering, if you read a text and turn it around, we'll give you a free book from this list. Go out there and find those programs, a lot of them are online, and we're including those for you. And the final piece, we have a public library right here in our town. I've met with librarians, they are equipped with iPads and with iPhones, they have an app called Book Wizard. With Book Wizard, you can scan the barcode on the back of any text, and it will tell you the reading level. It will say guided reading level, but that is the level that you're looking for, and the librarians will be able to assist you. So if you walk in and say, my child is a level M, what should he read? The response should be, find some text your child is interested in, and we'll let you know the texts that are just right on that level, and those that are maybe above and below. He or she could read all of them, but he might need your help with those higher-level texts. Again, so over the summer, please go to them if you're confused and you're not sure which text to read, and they will offer that service to you. Thank you so much for your attention this evening. I'm really thrilled about this program, and quite honestly proud that this is the direction that Nutley Public Schools is moving, because I do believe it is right for kids and for our readers. Thank you.
Any board members have any questions?
I will wait.
Just kind of, no questions? Okay, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Excellent, and we're happy to be moving that way. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Luz, are we ready for the Common Vision College Language presentation?
Hope so. Every year this time since we started, basically, we have updated our strategic work. We're now three years into the five-year plan. And what we call Common Vision, this idea of a strategic vision where the entire district, regardless of your role as a staff member or as a stakeholder, is focused on achieving certain core initiatives. And again, as I mentioned, we're three years into a five-year plan, and it really is demonstrative of the work of everyone. Our mission statement, which was newly drafted three years ago, not reading, again, the entire strategic plan is available online as well, all the updates and the work from this year. But obviously, the core of our work is students. And everything we do, we're trying to maximize our positive impact on students and their growth. Strategic planning for a school district, again, I'll bring this up, and it's just here in the sense that three years ago, four years ago, the district did not have a strategic plan. We did not have a singular focus, we did not have kind of that north star as to what we knew we wanted to embrace and continue, and what needed to be continually developed and added to, strengthened, et cetera. One of the issues that we talked about when we developed a strategic plan is that public institutions, specifically school districts, that do not have a strategic plan, it becomes very difficult to measure any kind of growth or success. What we found is that, you know, research shows that school districts that have a strategic plan are far more likely to grow and maintain currency as far as practice, and achieve the kinds of student success that they're looking for by having that plan. The old issue, though, is that research has shown, even as recently as two years ago, the vast majority of school districts that have strategic plans now, they're not achieving them. So our goal was always, we knew this when we started, it was proven again true only two years ago after we had begun, and so our goal of not just to write a nice plan, get people together, and again, we had 65 members of the community. We had teachers from every level in every building, we had almost every administrator, we had multiple board members, we had central office staff, we had parents, we had students, we had commissioners, and local stakeholders, representatives from every group, 65 people coming together to form one opinion about what the school district needs to do. It was a lot of work, took us about six months, and because of that, one of the things, once we wrote it, we said we have to be clear and set in that we want to make sure we achieve that which was written in the document. In order to do that, we developed a specific structure, which has continued now successfully for three years. I want to thank all the teachers, administrators, as well as the parents and students that have served on our action teams, which we'll talk about in a second. But the idea was that every year, we would set short one-year goals that will lead us toward those five-year goals, and I'm happy to report that so right now, we are currently on track in all of our errands. What was interesting today is that I've been interviewing a number of candidates as we, it's that time of year when the board is hiring new for coming here, lots of positions. I had two completely separate, unrelated people come in and say that obviously they were researching the district in preparation for their interviews, and separately, I got similar feedback, and it was interesting that they found a lot of the districts that they're going to either don't have an up-to-date strategic plan, or have obviously fallen behind in their strategic plan. They each noted separately that they thought it was impressive that as a district, we only had a cutting-edge strategic plan which was current and up-to-date, but for all evidence that was on the website, it looked as if we were moving toward those strategic goals. So I thought that was definitely some positive feedback. Our five-year plan, in order to achieve these large-picture, large-scale items, year one was research and creation of a draft framework, framework being whatever the plan was for that specific action team. And year two, we wanted to finalize that draft and research specific implementation, again, not biting off more than we can chew in any one year. Year three, which we were in, staff development, target pilot implementation. We'll talk about how that went depending on the action team. Moving into year four now, moving what we've learned off the pilot is to expand across the district as appropriate into year five, which is full implementation of the actual action team's final goal. And that's pretty much how we've been working. Again, the idea is not biting off more than we can chew and making sure that we're making substantive contributions. Now, each of the six action teams that I'll talk about are in a different place, because as we've moved toward those six specific strategic goals, each goal, each committee found that they had a different, a little bit of a different path. And as far as our character team, the focus of our character team is that we want to make sure at level, in level-appropriate conversations and situations, that students are being challenged and able to talk about how they go about making what they consider right decisions. Mr. O'Dell, who's one of our administrative leaders, frames this committee's purpose well, and that we always want to focus on in service of what? We're doing all this work in service of what? Are we promoting a common good? Are we living up to expectations that we've set for ourselves? Are we always asking of ourselves, am I the person that I want to be, and what can I do to be better every day? Our feeling is, again, a lot of these things happen, and we develop our character, our ethics, our values, our morals, kind of sometimes just by happenstance and by experience, we don't talk about it. The district's purpose is to make sure that at K-12, there's a focused conversation going on with students while they're with us, so they get challenged in situations in a safe way, can experience different situations, and that we learn from them so that when they go out without our support, can make decisions that they can be proud of. Our bullying work, Mr. Capella and Oliver, anti-bullying specialists, fall in many ways under this action team, and Mr. Capella is a big supporter of this work. Communication was a big piece, some of the feedback we got our first year when we did a district-wide survey for the township, was that we had to improve our ability to communicate. So the singular purpose of this team was to figure out better, more efficient, more effective ways for the district to communicate anything. Since its inception, we've completely redesigned and reestablished the website, we have approached social media in a completely different way, we've worked with the PCOs and other local organizations to make sure that we are getting news out there, getting feedback from them. We're on Twitter, we're on Facebook, and again, we have coaches doing that, principals, teachers. We have now opened up our website, our parent portal, 712, so the parents have continuous access to academic information on the students, but at the same time, the high school kids have a student portal, so they can be accessing similar information. We started both a parent academy, and we're working towards a township academy where teachers, staff members, administrators are holding sessions for parents. We've had sessions on the park, we have a state-of-the-district address every September. We run technology workshops for parents and senior citizens, not even necessarily things connected with the district, but just on things like social media and the internet, because our feeling is we're supporting the township as a whole. Working with Mr. Kelly in his classes and leveraging NHSTV, if you go on the website and see all they've done. But again, getting the word out and making sure, number one, people are on air of everything's going on, but more importantly, that they're getting involved and excited about it. Community, different. Not to involve the community, but rather to get the students learning at every grade level out beyond the classroom. Have a singular focus and a consistent effort across buildings and grade levels to make sure that we're connecting what's going on in the classroom with real-world experience, beginning right away in kindergarten, as much as possible. Mr. Carney, Mr. DiVillo, working on this action team, and a number of teachers and a large number of community members, trying to make sure that we have opportunities for our students to expand beyond. They created a toolkit, and one of the things we're looking to expand next year is access to that toolkit of all our teachers, because there's a number of wonderful things going on. We've never necessarily connected them to a larger picture. What we want to do is take the things a lot of our staff members are already doing and connect them to a strategic plan, and see if we can replicate them across the district where possible. Competency, this was a big one. The idea that there are, there is a skill set, of skills that make successful people successful. Beyond what you need to know in math, what you need to know in language arts, or even music, there is a consistent set of skills that run underneath all content areas and allow successful people to be successful. Self-directional awareness, commitment, collaboration, communication, information literacy. These are things that we, that flow through our classes, but we don't necessarily teach or more importantly, discuss with the students on a regular basis. Mrs. Powell and her Health and Physical Education teachers took a huge step with this while we piloted, we targeted their department. If you walk in, you see how the class is now run, there are conversations that have never happened in the past that are happening with students. They're talking about not just what they achieved, but how they achieved it, so that they can go out and replicate achievement by having mastered conspicuously that they, that what they did in order to become successful. We're looking to roll this out more through the district, to get these conversations moving, and something a little that a teacher can do in existing lessons, to focus on, well wait, where did we go wrong? How could it be better? Or where did we go right? How did we get here? But using the same language from K to 12 that comes to these skills is incredible, so that students, not only from teacher to teacher at a grade level, but as they progress through grade levels, that experience is simply compounded, and as teachers, again, we're working together even sometimes when we're not talking to one another. Configuration, this is a big one that really split into three separate sub-action teams, elementary, middle, and high school. The idea behind configuration is that we researched successful school districts. We want to see how they were built, how they were structured, how they were configured, to see if how we were built, structured, or configured was getting in the way of even higher levels of success. Work at this level, we talked about schedules at the middle, the elementary, and the high school. The elementary, how to progress, they've been working on consistent language when it comes to code of conduct, as well as other pieces with their scheduling, making sure things were consistent by content area and by department. They're going to continue that conversation moving forward, as well as with the communications team, rolling out to parents and the community a larger code of conduct to ensure, number one, our character and competencies are infused in that. And more importantly, that parents understand what the expectations are at any level so that they can work with us as a team of adults to support the growth of their student. At the middle level, we are in the middle school model at this point, I want to congratulate again, successful year. Those middle school teachers absolutely stepped up, we completely... Those middle school teachers absolutely stepped up, we completely reconfigured how the middle school works and operated, communicated with parents, it changed the structure to the day. The teachers really dove in, and are trying to maximize as best as we can, a use of a small learning community around every kid, so that students see what structures can be built around them to sustain success. In the high school, they can then practice building those themselves with all the resources there, with the idea being that when they leave high school and we are not there to support them, they've built those skills and understand those structures so they will be successful beyond. At the high school, did a lot of work with scheduling, looking at successful high performing high schools. And recently, the teachers came up with, going back to this past year, a number of different options, those options have been kind of fed with administrative input as well, and have morphed, we're looking forward at some point to moving into what we call rotate and drop schedule because of that. There are numerous benefits to the students, I congratulate the teachers for supporting the students first, and looking to see how we can better configure our day, within the same amount of minutes that we had, how can we structure in a more effective way so students are getting the most out of it. So again, configuration, three separate areas of work. And then, I think the, the action team that had the most immediate impact on the district was curriculum. When I came into district, I visited every building, tried to meet individual teachers and administrators right away, and consistent feedback, while the topic may have changed, I constantly got comments on, we need, we need this, we need that, we need to do, we need these in classrooms, and what had apparently happened while teachers were kind of on their own, supporting advancement, and we did have a structure in place of a district that support teachers as they did that. So the sole job of the curriculum team, this didn't actually change curriculum, it was to put into place a process that we were annually evaluating all of our curriculum assessment instruction, so that we made sure we never fell behind with K to cutting-edge practices. We have a five-year cycle that every curriculum area goes through, each year serves a different purpose, and the curriculum committee, while it's only in year three, moves to year four, has to solidify all five of those years, so that if a whole new group of administrators and teachers came in, they could pick that process up where it is and continue to move forward, making sure every year we were maintaining cutting-edge. One of the purposes, a major impact of this, is that we should never find ourselves five, seven, ten years behind and have to make huge, significant changes to our curriculum, our instructional practices and resources in any way. We always want to make sure we're ahead. The curriculum committee, our action team, through this work, working with the board and different groups of teachers, we have, you've heard about, Mr. Benavides talking about where your workshop came out of our curriculum action team, our math support, our math instruction through our curriculum action team, or language changes, our curriculum action team, health and physical education as well, our fine and performing arts, our science programs, all from these set processes, and there's been a lot of change because of it, but the idea is that as it rolls out, it should smooth out as well, and that the changes we have going forward are smaller because we're constantly vigilant about where we should be with these processes and how our students are doing. We spend a great deal of time with this committee, this action team, working with student performance data, to make sure that what we think is going to help is in fact actually helping. I tell you what, I just want to finish here for the board, we've had a separate sub-presentation, if there are any general questions about common vision before I move to common language. Excellent. Common language, as usual, specific to how we use the same language to talk about our professional practice. I happened to walk in as superintendent when the state made a significant change when it hadn't been seen for a long time. We took that change right away that first summer and came up with our purpose. And we talk about professional practice, is growth, learning, and accountability in that order. We know we're accountable to a great number of stakeholders, that's a given, we accept that professional responsibility, but that's not our focus. Our focus is that we're constantly learning, and that that learning produces measurable improvement in our professional practice, which we call growth. We've worked now for three years on the process, to try and make sure that what we're doing is having the desired impact. Again, just some information on common language, this will be up on the website, but as always, the idea is that everyone comes to teaching with a little bit different experience. If we're going to be one district working together, we don't want to do things the same, but we have to have a common language to discuss what we do with each other, to make sure that we're always giving the best we possibly can to our students. One of our key pieces, obviously, is compliance with the state law, but what we, I think, we've been able to do within compliance is find things that support our teachers and therefore our students the most effectively, and that's our goal, not just to simply do what we're told, but do what we think is actually best. And when we've had issues with it, with things, things have come up through procedures, processes that are in place in the district, we've been able to go to the state and make sure that what we wanted to do wasn't aligned, because we felt there was something bad. Every time we have gone and passed, the decision's been amenable to accepting whatever it is we did, by within the letter of the law, that way we were able to create things that we felt were bad. We work on a growth cycle, we call it connected evaluation, because we want to make sure that you don't have one, two, three random, you know, stop-ins from different administrators, but that we are connecting your conversation, the teacher's conversation about professional growth, to their goals. We're still working on the process, but the idea is that if we can accurately look at our professional practice, who better to set our own professional goals than us as individuals, as professional practitioners? Multiple cycles that push through, different evaluations, this idea of reflection has been key. But the idea behind our push for reflection is simply this, all the research shows that even though people constantly think about their practice, and we do so much when it comes to growth, but research-based practice, when you actually write down and discuss your own practice, you are vastly more likely to make significant improvements in your practice from year to year than if you're simply thinking about it on your own. And so what we try to do is couple, what most of our teachers are already doing, not all of them, which is thinking about what they do on a day-to-day basis with this idea of structured reflection, so that we can have consistent growth in the vision. State feedback. These three statements came over the course of the last three years, I added the main bullet, we received an email about a month ago, the state is putting together a committee to look at, reexamine the law and professional evaluation, they've invited twenty districts to be part of it, Nutley was one of them. Feedback being in the email, that they could fortunately have working with us, and based on what we were doing, they wanted us at the table to discuss how better to shape the law moving forward. Those meetings start up in the summer, I look forward to the presence of people. As far as this year, we continue professional development, both administrator and faculty, as well as collaborators, professional development, something we feel, based on feedback, needs to be more of moving forward, but getting, we're supposed to be working together, we shouldn't train separately, we should be training together. As far as oversight, state requires we have a district evaluation advisory committee, there are members from every level, board member, parent as well, the central office administrators on that committee, meet three or four times a year to make sure that what we're doing is in compliance, and if there are issues that are raised all the way to the district level, this committee would then oversee that. School improvement panels, again, creation of the state, the idea that there is almost a leadership team at every building, in every building, to make sure that the process is being rolled out appropriately, and that recommendations are being made to the appropriate level when they feel there's a change that could improve our process. The final piece, we have an administration committee, sorry, the administration committee for the board, also oversees this, there's a regular monthly meeting where we discuss how our values and the rest are going. As far as reflection this year, we, I mentioned reflection as a key piece to getting better. DEAC gets together, we review what we, the data we have for the year, we met with the SKIPS early on in this year to discuss data that we had from our first year of implementation, sharing all the data that we have, you know, trying to be as transparent and collaborative, reflective as possible with the teachers, with the administrators, because this is evaluation for everyone except for central office staff, every single staff member falls under this plan. And finally, the big piece is about, three or four weeks ago, we put together a district-wide evaluation committee, they have generated about nine pages of recommendations in eight different categories, on how they feel we can better, how we can better our system, how we can improve the system. Those are going to be shared with administrators, and then we're going to get together, select members of the teacher staff, we'll select members of the administrative staff to see how we can start improving, and hopefully be training on an even better process come September. Our goal is always to improve what we're doing. Again, I have to say, this has been a turbulent, difficult time, I think, in education across the state, it's been a terribly difficult time in many ways here in Nutley as well. I think people are nervous, because the first time there are new terms being used by the state, there are repercussions to certain actions and the rest. Our focus has always been professional practice and investing in the staff that we have, the staff that's already here, and following the process to when we have to go get new staff, bringing the best we possibly can, and try and make them successful. I applaud the association work with us two years ago, we changed our induction, where it used to be two or three days before the first year, and then, good luck, to now two full years of induction support that's gradually leaned off of, so the teachers gradually release. Those new teachers get a lot more support in the beginning, and little by little, as they get their legs and are comfortable, we kind of set them off on their own to make sure that they're successful. Our goal, again, to invest in the people that we have here for the good of our students. We do a lot of data analysis, just as examples, we have our own internal data, we received data from the state this, this past year, it came very late, but as soon as we got it, we tried to share. And we set that with multiple committees, we try not to hide the data at all, we want to get it out in the right format, so that we're using data to inform our decisions. And even some of those decisions are, what data actually means something to us, and what data is just being collected. But things like, we look at our professional practice, by grade level, by content area, we try and look at different groups to see what the data tells us so we can improve. We also look at the data, the state gives us from our MSGPs and our overall evaluations, assistant administrator, and teacher, and faculty. We also look at our internal data, the state requires that we do what's called a student growth objective, which is a fancy way of making sure that our students are learning the curriculum. In the first year, we learned at the district, and again, if you look at our numbers, we're incredibly successful. This year, we turned over the process to our individual teachers, obviously with the support of their administrators, and our goal is to make sure the teachers, our setting meaningful goals for themselves, are saying, this, this is where my kids are right now, how can I work to make them even better than I knew I was going to make them before? A great deal of work sort of go about this. I know there's still seemed to be back, we get a lot of unanswered questions, but again, our goal, we believe, if we invest in our professionals and they're continually growing, the benefits will just be tenfold at our students. Mr. Capel.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further questions? Okay, we're going to do stuff with some committee reports, does everybody get to sit down? Lisa, so we get ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee, on June 16th, Mr. Jones, Mr. Odell, and Dr. Bradley, review the work of the character action team for the 2014 school year, as well as year four goals. Mr. Benavides discussed the revisions in the summer reading program. Dr. Hulani reviewed the work to date of the report card committee. The committee continues to work to create a standard-based report card with scoring rubrics for each of the identified standards. The report card will be finalized during the summer and will be used beginning September 2015. Dr. Hulani also reviewed the academic purchases, these purchases include line of arts materials for the teachers in K through eight, mathematics materials for the high school, and project adventure supplies for physical education at the high school. We also reviewed the NJ Child Assault Prevention, NJ CAP application grant, also curriculum instruction, professional development, internships, and districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flaherty, do you have to hear the finance report?
Finance committee, May 19th, Mrs. Jamins reviewed the agenda resolution that exists on contract renewals, cafeteria license to next year transfers. Mr. Dickellette provided an update on the bid open that took place on June 16th. He recommended that Floyd and Rappide school be replaced this summer, and we reviewed the bus estimates. The committee reviewed the list of potential service base projects and discussed the repairs being made to the students in the outside of, among other matters of the drive. The committee also reviewed signs being donated to Lincoln School and the East School. Mrs. Jamins reviewed the year-end budget and projections. The committee is recommending to fund the capital on maintenance reserves, and the exact amount will be determined at the conclusion of the June 30th audit. Mr. Levine and Mr. Turfey and my spirit presented the committee with a detailed list of allowable purchases that are on tonight's agenda, and they discussed infrastructure as well as facilities and the pilot and the re-roll device program. Committee also discussed the extended day financial report for May, bus lot variance update, and the water treat, which is scheduled for July 18th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Mrs. Ziski.
Yes, under the President, the administration committee held its monthly meeting, and you'll see multiple of our morning discussions on the agenda for tonight.
That's it.
Does Mr. Flaherty have something further to say?
No, not my command, I'm in the room.
Okay, Mrs. Flaherty?
Hi, yes, myself, Mr. Dancheck Martinson on the mural committee, you may not have heard about it yet, it's been brought about by Mr. Riley and Mr. Williams and our, and some of the committee members. It's a really exciting project, I've heard a lot in the past couple meetings about the art, the architecture in Lincoln School, all our different schools. I love telling about the one I learned about, if you're from Lincoln School, there's two murals up of two different girls on two different posters, it was moved on in 1940, and it was projected, that was them in their young, school year age, and then when they get older, and it ties together to the Lincoln School song at the end about growing up, at the end of their song. That was actually drawn and done by the mural in the mural, actually, is enlisted across Seattle, we found that she's in a, she's in a nursing home right now, we're trying to identify the other, but was done by students in Nutley, as well as some of the art that were Nutley students that became famous artists that are now in Grace Church, our murals here for middle school, all those things. So a new project this year will be creating art by our students in the school system again. So what will be happening is, Walkerville School will be 100 years old next year, and we're going to have a mural program, we're going to be putting out timelines for the project, jumping in a minute, where we're actually going to state what the theme would be. The students will get to actually, from seven through 12, will be able to submit renderings, will be voted on, and then will be chosen, and one will actually then turn into a formal mural, a cloth, like all the others are, and put up here in the middle school. So just telling you about the timelines, is that the project will be announced to the students in early September. We might not say this right, Mrs. La Pasoro, who is one of the art teachers, will be working with Mr. Simcoe, who's another artist from Nutley, to meet with the students, where they will be given some time off of schools, taking tours of murals in Grace Church, they will be given other murals to tour, so they can tie them back into the theme of the project. The presentations will be shown, they will be public, at the mayor's tree lighting here inside the middle school, will be all of the different murals, people will be able to vote for them, to send what that might be to the committee, the committee will make the final decision, and they'll be announced at December 10th at the high school winter concert. Also, on the committee is Mr. Barry Lenson, his father was inducted into the Nutley Hall of Fame two years ago, who's a famous artist from Nutley, he's also done worldwide work, as well as Mr. Williams, Ms. Egan, Dominic Cabaldo from the Historical Society, and hopefully it's going to be a really successful project in terms of something that we then want to make annual, and do other art, advance our students in art, and install it in all the other schools, so, thank you.
Will that be on the website?
It will be on the website, one of the dates, and I'll have to ask.
Okay, and I need to report, as a chair of negotiation committee, what I'd like to thank my committee, Mr. Przyzinski, and Mr. Carnesella, along with our BA and our superintendent, also like to thank the teachers' union. Today we met again, today was our final meeting. Committee is pleased to announce that negotiations with the Education Association of Nutley concluded today. Agreement is expected to be ratified by the Association upon the opening of the 2015-16 school year, after which time it will be ratified by the Board of Education. Till that time, particulars on the agreement remain confidential. I did want to thank everyone that participated. We started in December, we finished up today, we had some bumps, but we got through. We hired a new attorney who did a phenomenal job with us, I believe, and I think the two groups, we had a hard job, and we came together, and I think we appreciate the teachers, we appreciate the secretaries, we appreciate the whole staff in our school district, and if it was up to the board, and we had the money, we'd give you as much as we could. Unfortunately, we're at times where, you know, with 2% cap and technology and things that we're trying to lead to is not as easy, but I still think we came up with a good agreement, and you'll soon find that out, I'm sure. I'm just happy to say that we settled our negotiations and we move forward. Thank you. Now we're going to, I'm going to read. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed to tonight's agenda. Our board regulation, 600... Our board regulation 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications, each person shall be limited to three minutes, we ask you to try to stay within the requirements, the speakers may speak more than once, only if all other divisions speak, not if they have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please always remember to state your name and your address each and every time you address the board, and sign in with Ms. Kukuzza before you take the microphone. The first person wanting to speak regarding our resolution, step up to the mic, and I do want to make another announcement that the finance, not which one, personnel? Personnel agenda has been revised, it's resolutions 1 to 11, so we grabbed it in the beginning of the night, there are new ones out there for personnel. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step up to the mic. Seeing none, I'm going to close this portion of the meeting, and I'm going to ask, Lisa, you can read academic resolutions 1 to 13?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to pass the resolutions 1 to 13, that's right.
Second. Any questions? Questions from any board members on the resolution? Seeing none, Madeline?
Mrs. Dancheck Martin, do you ask Mr. Ferreira?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Salera?
Yes.
Mr. Spazada?
Yes. Mr. Ferreira, finance resolutions 1 to 68?
Mr. Sorry, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Charles, can you do administration?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, administration resolutions 1 to 4 as prepared.
Any discussion? Madeline?
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferreira?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Salera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes. Now, Mr. Ferreira, can you do the finance resolutions 1 to 68?
Yes, Mr. President, I make a motion to approve finance resolutions 1 to 68.
Second. Any discussions on any of the resolutions? Mr. Salera?
On number 35, dealing with expanding insurance and computers, every year I hear back from the finance committee of why we're doing this, this is technology, they're really needed. I'd really like to put on more that the technology committee work in next year's budget to create a line item that's sustainable for that, every year it's shortcut, you wind up coming up with funds other ways, you've got technology up to date, I really think it's incumbent on the finance committee to work in next year's budget to put a lot of line item in there till we be able to see years end, because there'll be a year we may not be able to do this, and then we can have...
You shake your head, yes? We will do that. Madeline, go up for me.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferreira?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Salera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes. Personnel, Mr. Kozinski, can you read the new personnel 1 to 11?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, as you may have read, there is a new revised agenda for the personnel resolutions. Also, on the resolution number one, there's an amendment, we are going to delay tonight voting on the spring and winter coaching positions. Put that on resolution, personnel 1 to 11.
Second. Any discussion? Ready? Yes, sir, is that? Discussion?
We will read the, even though I passed the entire resolution, we will read the testimonials. And anyone wish to take the testimony in order, if you know?
Would you start with the...
Well, the following teachers have tendered their resignation, have signified their intention of retiring from active service, and that's a good word, active service, and whereas through the years they exemplify the finest qualities of their profession at all times, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation of their long and faithful service, and extends its best wishes for their continued health and happiness, and be further resolved that this resolution should be made a part of the minutes of this meeting, I solemnly...
Okay. Any discussion, we're going to also read eight and nine. We move to the wall, we're just going to read seven, eight, and nine.
And I think we should at least recognize the names, and I hope I don't torture them, but Linda Bastone, Blotting DeVulles, Catherine Franks, Jolinda Guaird, Teresa Rubash, Hannah Hunder, Catherine Corbatic, Vicky Latkin, Joan Lightfoot, Marshall Napolitano, Sharon Romilia, Olga Solder, Michael Villarreal, and Nikki Velasis. Thank you, thank you very much for your service.
Can you read number eight, Chris?
Number seven?
No, number eight.
Number eight, on the revised agenda that we... I'm sorry. Whereas Mr. Rosary McConan has tendered her resignation as Dieton Secretary and has signified her intention of retiring from active service, and whereas Mr. McConan has worked in the Nutley Public Schools for a period of 24 years, and whereas through the years, McConan has exemplified the finest qualities of the secretary position at all times, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mr. McConan its deep appreciation for her long and faithful service, and extends to her its best wishes for her continued health and happiness, and be a further resolved that this resolution should be made part of the minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Jeffrey, let's read this morning, number eight, or nine?
Yes, Mr. President, whereas the following current professionals have tendered their resignations and have signified their intention of retiring from active service, and whereas through the years they have exemplified the finest qualities as current professionals at all times, now therefore be a resolved that the Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation for her long and faithful service, and extends its best wishes for continued health and happiness, and be a further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of this meeting. Suzanne Baker and Natalie Tissot.
Okay, Mr. Ferreira, number 10?
Whereas Mr. Joseph Garfalle has tendered his resignation as bus driver and has signified his intention of retiring from active service, and whereas Mr. Garfalle has worked in Nutley Public Schools for a period of 16 years, and whereas through the years Mr. Garfalle has exemplified the finest qualities of the trainer position at all times, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mr. Garfalle its deep appreciation for his long and faithful service, and extends its best wishes for continued health and happiness, and be a further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you.
Whereas Mr. Robert Bigley has tendered his resignation as custodian effective January 1, 2015, and has signified his intention of retiring from active service, whereas Mr. Bigley has worked in the Nutley Public Schools for a period of 23 and a half years, and whereas through those years, Mr. Bigley has exemplified the finest qualities of the custodial position at all times, now therefore be a resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mr. Bigley its deep appreciation for his long and faithful service, and extends its best wishes for continued health and happiness, and be it therefore resolved that this resolution be made part of the minutes of this meeting.
Mr. Russo?
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferreira?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Salera?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes. Okay, hearing of citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters, the regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask that you try to stay within the requirement. I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me, give your name to Madeline, and anyone wishing to speak, come up to the microphone.
Michelle Cristintello, yeah, I am the president. As Mr. Spazada, maybe I'll go back. As Mr. Spazada has stated, as of today, we have reached a tentative settlement for the upcoming 2015-2018 collective bargaining agreement. The memorandum of agreement will be presented to and voted on by the membership in early September. I would like to thank my negotiating team for their hard work, commitment, and dedication they have displayed during this process. I'd like to thank the faculty and staff of the district for their support during this time, and for their commitment to the numerous initiatives that have been implemented during the duration of this contract. Their hard work and dedication have knocked on unnoticed. Thank you to the Board of Education, and especially your negotiating team, for your time and effort to bring this process to completion. Thank you, Mr. Velasis and Dr. Valan, for your leadership and support.
Mr. Kozinski, any comments?
Thank you, Ms. Michelle. The committee and the Board of Education appreciates what we've accomplished, if your teachers and your staff and your group does not realize, having leaders like yourself, Mike, Phil, outstanding leaders that did a good job for us and for them, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I'm going to close it, I'm going to go to our old business. Any old business we need to go about, okay? Okay, new business. Okay, I've got new business, the board, I interviewed six candidates on June 8th, 2015, for the board vacancy. At this time, nominations are now in order to fill the board vacancy. I'd like to call up Brenda Sherman. Okay, Brenda Sherman being nominated, I need a second. Second. Do all in favor? Ah, both? Brenda, come up to the microphone. Go up to the microphone, Brenda, go this way in.
Family members can join her if they'd like.
They don't want to join?
Don't shy. Just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
I, Brenda Sherman, do solemnly swear...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a board of education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Perform all duties of that office.
Perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Welcome aboard, Brenda. Okay, now executive session, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10:12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recess to close executive session at this time to discuss student legal and personal matters, be further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, and when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session will no longer exist. Motion, break, motion, break. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.